I'd like to call today's planning commission meeting to order. All members are present. We have established quorum. We do plan on speaking at today's meeting. I do have to administer an oath. All you have to do is say "I do" after I administer it. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? Say "yes."
I do.
All right, thank you. First up, we have disposition of the last meeting minutes. They have been provided.
I have two small changes, Charlene. One is under attendees. Kenneth Olers, his last name ends with an S. And then on page 2, under Communications for the Meadow Lane, the second sentence in the first paragraph, or excuse me, the third sentence in the first paragraph. The property in question is part of a planned unit development constructed by Sol and Bloom. The company was actually Sol and Wentworth. W E N T W O R T H.
In that same sense, wasn't it addition to the first and second floor?
No, the first floor was just a patio enclosure.
Okay.
Basically. So the room, the actual structure is on the second floor.
And the only question I have is whether or not we captured all the guests that we can go back and review.
Okay, move we accept the minutes with those modifications.
A second to that motion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Say "aye."
Aye.
The opposition? All right. On discussion with the minutes, there were a couple of questions that were asked in it, and I don't know if we want to just save that for Communications. But one of them being on that Meadow Lane property was, past variances denied or approved through research for the commission members? If that work is ongoing?
Well, I was going to save it for Communications, but I can say that the applicants are obtaining an attorney, and they will, he will meet with I, me, whenever. The attorney that I thought was going to be representing them is not able to do so now because the people in opposition have the same attorney. So, they're both researching, looking for new attorneys at this time, so.
Is this Meadow Lane?
Yes.
Could I ask a question on that topic?
Mm-hmm.
If it says in the restrictive covenant that everybody was part of, that Mr. Wentworth is the one that has to ask for it, why would he defer to us unless he changes his restrictive covenant?
The covenant says that the designer, the architect, has to sign off on the style.
Okay, when would that be?
Well, from Mr. Wentworth's perspective, he said if a variance or any, if a change is permitted by the city, he has no issue signing off on the design because the color schemes, et cetera, are in line with the project. They're very hands-off with the project at this point, but.
I guess I would wonder if people who participate in such developments would understand that after a few years, somebody could really radically change the intention of this. And I think anybody who is purchasing a property has a reasonable expectation that everybody will have the same opportunities. And if we did it in the past, it's irrelevant to me. I can't see why Mr. Wentworth wouldn't want to hold to his original and let them go through and change a different way. I mean, it's not, it's not just a design factor, and it, you know, it certainly does fly in the face of what would be typically a planned unit development. Or, I mean, a development like that. I drove around it and I said, "Oh my goodness, it's going to go way out," as Abby Lovell said. I mean, and then, will all of them go, and then there will be no open space? I mean, the way it's, the way it starts, where does it end?
Exactly.
I guess I, you know, if this is just the way it goes, then why are we even bothering to permit projects that go through this way? I mean, we, it was designed to be a well, to be a development that has a single focus, has a certain space pattern, and then over time, we let them gradually chew up the backyards. I mean, is that really what we're doing here? I guess I don't want to ask you that question. I think that's what you're doing there. I'll just assert that. I think that's what's going on. But, we'll see.
Well, I mean, I guess it does make the question, if the architect hasn't even signed off on it yet, why should we be reviewing it?
Well, I think it says in here that we review it and say it's okay for him to sign off, which I don't agree with.
I don't know if we can get.
And I'm not saying that's going to be the process either. I think we need to let, I imagine Law, the Law Office is going to come into play on this as to which process it has to go through.
I think anybody who's buying into one of these things needs to know that this is the way it's going to work in the future, because it's pretty bad anyway.
Right. But I think the Code Office denied the application because it didn't meet setbacks, or, I mean, it was.
Even though it's been done before.
It's like 15 variances would be needed, or some.
15 variances? Well, yeah, and it's not even.
That's just a random number.
Even beginning to meet code, ever, right? It wouldn't meet code as a standalone. It's a pud, it has a separate set of zoning, right? I mean, that's the way we require.
Well, that's what we're going to, we need to establish, because what I've found in the pud regulations to date is that only the perimeter on the pud is what is required to meet the regulations, that the interior doesn't. But since each, since each one of these are fee simple lots, does each lot need to meet the regulation? And that's where.
Is it fee simple now?
Yes.
It always was. Basically, I think the definition of pud changed between when this was established. If you remember, the PUDs were in the zoning code at the time, then it got switched over to subdivisions.
I don't, you know, I don't really care where it is, but it seems to me a pud has a map, there's a separate zoning entity that reflects what's going on. And we would be changing that map.
There is a recorded plat.
I mean, exactly.
And it's, I've seen it, and it has everything separated out.
In all puds, wherever they are.
Yeah.
I just get kind of a queasy feeling about this, because.
Sure.
It seems like it's maybe a bridge too far, or porch too far, or something.
Well, and again, you look at Herald Square, for instance, which is fee simple as well. That came in as a pud and ended up as a subdivision in the various renditions, if you remember.
Yes, I remember.
Remember that?
On a dime, as I recall.
Well, I think they, they did two modifications, if I remember, of the PUD, and then, when they decided not to do it as a, as a pud, as a, you know, rental, they decided to do fee simple, and then they started calling it a subdivision at that point, with variances, I believe. So, so if you were to backtrack on our definition now, saying fee simple means no pud, again, there's a blend here going on, a change in definition. I think that's occurred over the 20 years.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, but I would like to, if you buy a lot, and the lot is plotted on a map, and it has a certain set of design items, you have a reasonable expectation that's going to be the way it is, I think.
Yes.
And to change it radically and give one person much more is, is something we should consider very carefully.
And when you're dealing with a subdivision, one of the things you're always supposed to think about is, not the impacts to the property owner, but the impacts to the neighbors, because they, they did buy in with an expectation that things would more or less stay the same for the life of their, the time they lived there, so.
Okay, but since everybody's luring up, I suspect we need to see this for a little bit, right?
Or else maybe people will realize, maybe more complex than they thought?
Right.
That's a thing, too.
And that, like you said, the BZI already basically pushed it back to our plate.
They did, but we'll go from there.
Okay. All right. Any other further questions on Meadow Lane from the minutes last meeting?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on to cases, there are none this week, so we'll skip ahead to Communications. One of the major items that we want to discuss, this meeting was commission goals for this current year, 2012. Kind of leave this open to the floor. I know one of the big ones we had wanted to get underway pretty early is the Lower East Side rezoning request of the sort of East State Street to roughly Jacobs Avenue.
I would say Far East Side.
Far, sorry. Far East, yes.
Yeah. I think you might make some people unhappy if you call it the Lower East Side.
I actually have a neighborhood association, female, Far East Side Neighborhood Association.
How about historic preservation?
I wondered if that was the neighborhood-specific residential district.
No.
That, well, I guess it would probably be a nice item for, I mean, there is the rezoning request, and I think we do have to deal with that, but it, one, conceptually, one thing I had was that, you know, we do have these neighborhood associations that are very active, that we can take a look at and how the comprehensive plan defines the neighborhoods, and, you know, put together advisory committees based on the residents and the neighborhood association, and looking at, you know, specific to that neighborhood zoning, as opposed to R1, R2, R3. You know, those would still exist, but it could be something like an overlay within those zones that are specific to the neighborhoods, such as, you know, we brought up the Far East Side has a lot of ranch homes, not a lot of two-story houses, whereas the East Side has, you know, a lot of two-story houses that take up more of the lot. They definitely are different, but currently they're kind of zoned very similar, so.
And I do feel that, as Nancy Baines stated, historic preservation, in light of the last month or so, we've had a lot of calls to revitalize that.
Before it was, Paul, am I correct, or, right now, are you approaching the historic preservation ordinance through as a subsection to Title 23 or more as another section?
Standalone chapter.
Okay.
An overlay?
Yeah, with an overlay, correct.
Oh, with an overlay.
With an overlay specifically for the Uptown Historic District, with the opportunity for council to create additional overlays for other neighborhoods as they, if they choose, or overlays specific to certain sites. That would, it would give them flexibility.
So, when you talk about putting an overlay, it would actually bridge a separate chapter as well as Chapter 23?
Similar to our flood ordinance.
Or the Internet Cafe.
You can look at the flood ordinance as being a zoning ordinance, it's an overlay to our zoning map, yeah.
Okay.
Or Internet Cafe is correct.
Yeah, and I guess one of the dialogues when we were talking about, when we.
Actually, let me correct you on that. The Internet Cafes is part of our, is Title 23.
Yes, but there's also business.
Flood ordinance is Title 25, it's its own chapter.
And, yeah, business regulations.
But there's a business regulations, Title 9, which is, it missed a passing, I think, at council level. So, this is a case where the legislation straddles two different chapters. And you're talking about starting a historic preservation chapter itself, or?
Yes.
And then with the idea that the overlays would be, end up in the Title 23 zoning legislation?
That's correct.
Okay.
With historic preservation, right now, would it, who would be the, I guess, the advisory board for that? Would it be the City Council, or would it be?
We'd probably have to make that up.
An architecture review board, or?
What you would do, if an ordinance is adopted, my recommendation would be that there be a historic preservation commission. That is the body that handles those, those things.
Would that be specific to each district? Because I know the Near East Side was concerned about there.
My goal upfront there was to have, was to focus on the Uptown Historic District, but no, I don't see why it would need to be, you would, you would not need to have a separate commission for each district. It's a small enough town, and you've got, you do need to have people with specific knowledge, background and skills, architecture, law, land use, historic preservation, local history, et cetera. And to try to create 20 different commissions to oversee that could be a significant challenge, but.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to that either, if, if that's what council thinks would be the best direction to take.
Now, the Strip of Nina already has the historic designation.
Registration.
It's registered, yeah.
Registered.
So, the overlay would just impact the Uptown area, but the board would have oversight over the whole city, or?
That would be for council to determine what oversight, what jurisdictions, and what authorities they would have. My personal take would be that because you have a historic neighborhood, if the property owners in that historic neighborhood did want to have, have that, that's fine. The neighborhood is not designated as historic because it has one distinct flavor, for an example of a German village.
Right.
It's easy when you have one distinct flavor for a residential neighborhood to have guidelines, but it's very difficult when the, the reason it was adopted as a historic neighborhood was because of the variety of housing stocks. So, what applies to one house because it's Victorian would be entirely different than what applies to an arts and crafts house. So, there's, that's a very difficult challenge, I think, to have clear guidelines. You could just have general guidelines based on the Department of the Interior's general guidelines, if they wanted to follow that. I would leave that up to council. My, my preference would be to, to start immediately, or to focus on the Uptown District. Again, that's, that's been on the books since 1981, 31 years later, and we still don't have any guidelines for it. The, the Near East Side neighborhood has been on the books for, I think, a year and a half, or, so.
The only guidelines that exist in the Uptown area is the brick streets, I believe, isn't it? I mean, that would be one component right there.
Yeah.
So, there, there is actually some restriction out there, but it only affects us as the city and not the actual private property owners.
And benches and lights, too, right?
Yeah, I think that was just part of the street improvement. It wasn't called streetscape, it was something else, I know that much.
Yeah, I was wondering, if you did an overlay, wouldn't that other district automatically be included? I mean, it, wouldn't that be a reasonable, rational thing to do?
It would be up to council to determine which districts they'd want to create.
Tell them what you want.
Now, wait a second, there's, there are two zones here, B3 and PE2D, remember?
Yeah.
We've gone through that a couple times.
Well, I mean, this is just an overlay, so whatever's underneath it stays, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I think that the neighborhood groups come and go, and some of the people that were really hot for that East Side thing, I went to the meeting, now moved out in the country. And, you know, so, if you want the stability, I think, a single board, I would argue strongly for that.
Okay.
All right.
I've got another goal.
Yep, please.
Tweak the code in a couple of places, I think. Our planner knows a couple of them that need tweaking right away, but also, I asked him to consider, and I don't know if he even wants me to say it out loud in public, but those B1 zones, maybe going in the direction of a mixed-use idea in some of those local neighborhoods, especially in the close-in, high-density areas. I just see it as a way to move forward, just as we've moved forward on commercial, I mean, on transportation. And I think, I mean, it's a selling job. It might be more acceptable than higher-density housing, but I don't know.
When you say mixed on B1, what do you mean?
Well, the B1 zones maybe could be strengthened.
To make them.
Expanded.
Expanded?
I mean, maybe not expanded exactly, but maybe go more in the direction of less single use in the vicinity of op, of places that are able to handle it. And he, you gave me a list of things like beads and things in that whole corridor in there, going over to Miller's Poultry, and, you know, those are possible.
We don't have a whole lot, do we?
There might be a preference.
This may be a 10-year project.
Do you look at that one, when you say that, Nancy, do you, do you think of it as actually creating more B1 zoning, too?
Well, I think in some places where it's able.
Okay, okay.
Local business, something more than a tanning bed.
Well, I mean, I mean, the idea in the B1 is that it's neighborhood-specific businesses, and you do look at a neighborhood like the Far East Side where there is no B1, shouldn't there be a B1 in each neighborhood?
Possible. I mean, people will, may resist, but it depends on how you talk. I mean, I think it's, it's the new way. Maybe it's not for us, so.
Right.
That's part of tweak the code.
Tweak the code.
So, we are going to look at the Fina, the Far East.
That's first, isn't it, one of the first?
Yeah, I think just since that we did have that request that dates back to the end of last year.
And I think last week, we were looking at, and I assume that's going to jump in as the ground floor issue with B3s, right?
Yeah.
And B2s.
Yeah, business districts.
Yes.
And that's looking at what are the permitted principal, what are the permitted accessory in listing those uses, and then also determining, reviewing the limitations per zone.
Okay, realize that gets pretty complicated, really.
It's, I think this goes, I think this goes more into what Nancy has suggested with the tweaking of the code, the long-term code changes.
I'm a little torn, Nicholas, about that. I mean, I think, I don't mind interpretation as long as it's, you spell out, I don't, we don't want any operations outside, we don't want anything after 9 o'clock, we don't want anything to start before 8 o'clock, and serve the local neighborhood, and kind of make it a conditional permitted use, if you wish, or just a, you know, interpretation to me is okay. I don't think you can cover every eventuality, but that's just my opinion. You know, I'd really like, there's some words in that code I'd like to see out. I don't know if Milner is still in there, but I was thinking, goodness, that is really out of date. I think there's some other uses that are out of date.
I think I rid of the barrel maker a long time ago.
Did we get rid of the Cooper?
I think so.
Ice making, rag cleaning, blacksmith are still in.
Yeah, I know, it was like, aw, that was obnoxious, too. Luckily, we don't have them.
So, Nicholas, you said limitations, do you mean like restrictions?
Yeah, I mean, well, Nancy, so with hours.
We're going to have that.
Yeah, but distances would be a limitation, you know, you can have this, but it has to be so many feet from a R2 or an R1 zone, similar to how like in the B3 eating and drinking establishments has a drive-through distance limitation.
I'd say on-street parking in some cases. I mean, I think there are things, I was using the beads and things.
On-street parking?
Yeah, in, you know, if you're doing it in a neighborhood, you could say. Some places would lend themselves to it, others wouldn't.
That's true.
Because of parking. If, if some people are going to go, come from outside, like, I hope the beads and thing people don't take this personally, but I like the store, and I like where it is, and I think it works out just fine.
You realize that's one store of many. When I first came here, I think Crumbs was on West Washington. West End Tavern was open and running. I think there, at that time, I don't think the plumbing place just up the street.
Stow's Plumbing was kind of shaky at that point, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there was one across the street, too.
Well, it was some kind of motor place, wasn't it? They was doing blueprinting motors or something like that, or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're lots.
And now it's a restaurant, again, so it's gone through various, and I think Paul was telling me that Stumac is actually not a B3, is that the case?
It's R3.
It's R3.
That is Miller's.
Yes, it is actually non-conforming by definition.
Grandfather.
Yeah.
And it's a building that clearly wouldn't necessarily lend itself to redevelop, well, it probably.
Apartments in there.
I can see it, yeah.
Knock it down. It's terrible to even say that, I don't advocate it at all.
So, when you were saying on-street parking, you were implying is there's particular zones that can absorb on-street commercial parking and some that can't, maybe, or?
I think our code says that already, doesn't it, the downtown area?
Right.
And generally, you'd have off-street parking if, you know, I think that you'd have to fashion it very carefully. I'm not sure.
The downtown area uses commercially, parking garage for commercial for the zone.
And they also expect, for, yeah, for residential.
For residential, you're required to have parking.
Yep.
And if I remember, many years ago, it was a distance, because I remember Barron's was outside that distance for commercial, I think, I don't know what that.
500 feet from the parking garage.
Yeah. So, it's, it's in the zone, though, it's not a distance anymore, is it?
If, if, for residential.
B2D, downtown.
For commercial.
For commercial requires.
It's in the zone, right?
The parking garage suits for everything for that. And that was the issue, turning the Northern, North Court Street to a B2D, because then all the commercial required parking would, could disappear at that point.
Correct.
Okay. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this stuff, don't ever hesitate to tell me that, my, you know, I've got a gap in my memory, because I'm just like everybody else, and can forget the right things or the wrong things.
I wondered if other fellow commissioners were interested in looking at the density lot coverage to expand that. I mean, we just put it in place, which is simply for residential, and then we have this Stimson Avenue project that's taking up a square inch.
Should we change that to, to discuss that for use versus zone, make that distinction?
I think if you think about a residential use, that's solely in a, if it's strictly a residential use that's taking place in a B-zone, seems reasonable that the residential use in a B-zone should have to follow the same requirements as residential use in an R-zone in relation to lot coverage and all of that. We left that out of the code because we didn't want to have to tell commercial uses in a B-zone, you're not allowed to provide parking, when we have parking requirements already built in, and you've got to have a smaller building, et cetera, in relation to the lot coverage, so.
But we want to be careful there, though, too, because parking is permitted on the first floor in the R-zones.
Well, what about the R3? Was the 60 percent lot coverage for?
All R-zone. All R-zone, yes.
Yeah. I think if we're doing it for all R-zones, and R3 in its nature is multifamily apartment buildings.
They're so good.
That it would be applicable to residential and B-use.
I think we need to look, myself, and this is a longer-term thing, but I think we need to look for more places for denser use for residential, if the university is going to keep expanding, or maybe we don't.
They're building new.
They're going to build new ones?
Mm-hmm. Two new dormitories down in, Flood Park?
Wolf.
Yeah, but they will be elevated.
Wolf Street Apartments, remember, they're going to tear them up and put two new.
I knew they were going to tear them up, I figured, I didn't know what they were going to do there.
Yeah, Wolf Street and all of the apartments are being torn down, and then eventually all of the, New South Green will be taken down.
I just, I hate to see the business zones get gobbled up by housing. I mean, I think, and that's happened, every single, almost everything you look at, business is edged out because residential's much more lucrative. And I guess that's where my comment was coming from. Because we do need business.
Employee people who play income tax and pay more salary. Water running, all that.
All right, so, so far on the list, we have the rezoning request, historic preservation legislation, code, I guess we could call this code corrections, or?
Tweaking, words.
Tweaking.
Modification.
Modification.
Whatever. He doesn't like tweaking. Who can say?
It would be memorable this way. Four would be development limitations per zone. Five, density, lot coverage, and locations, so. Locations where density can be increased, decreased. Go ahead.
I just want to know, did you do cell phone towers?
We did, it's, the Law Director's Office is reviewing it now.
Oh, okay, that's one that was hanging some a long time ago.
Ideally, that'll be up for readings next week.
Soon? Okay, good.
And if you remember, and it is in our jurisdiction, that council ended last year without doing the PUD restrictions for R1s and PUD zones, because the wording wasn't where you want it to be. Again, that's subdivision regs, and really not our purview, but if we want to, you know, read.
Put a new, improved one in zoning, you can.
Bring it up to the top again, bubble it up to the top for council. I don't think if council's tracking it at this point, but if we want to, well.
They're all new.
Now, Chris, Chris Fall's not new, and, but she may have other things on her plate, so we want to bring that forward to their, you know, attention.
Putting it in the zoning code?
No, I wouldn't go that far.
Okay, I just wonder.
No, planned unit development is still planned unit development. The next one, of course, is Title 41, is where we want to mess with that and get something going towards them as well. What we like or don't like matters, since the last, we haven't had that many travels with Title 41s right now.
I think the time is rather restrictive, as we've found, so I really do would like to look at Title 41s again. And I get the intent, and it wasn't, it's not to prohibit, or postpone, or drag out, you know, development requests, but the 14-day timeframe has proven really challenging.
Is that written, though?
Yeah.
It was supposed to be revisited, though, as I recall, Paul, wasn't it?
We did once.
We did once and did some changes on it.
Pretty, pretty mild, it seems to be.
Revisited again.
Very mild, yeah. About a year in, it was, it was taken up again, and there were some things changed. I think some of the actual paperwork requirements and check procedure was, but nothing at the time.
It would also, it would probably be good with Title 41 to have something built into it, that the pre-application meeting should actually be with the planning commission. We, that's, we encourage that, but there's nothing that requires it. We try to get them to come before they submit their final plans to speak with you guys, but if time doesn't permit, they, they'll move forward without that, so it seems like...
Yeah. The timeline is that service safety director determines application is complete, and then from the days that the, 15 days from determining that the application is complete is when the city staff has to return in their review for comment. And then 15 days after all the administrative reviews are complete, the planning commission must make a ruling.
We're doing pretty much both of that within a 15-day timeframe.
Yeah, see, that's, we really should have had more time.
That's tough. Okay. Title 41 needs...
All right. So, Title 41, and perhaps PUD.
And you can recommend that to council, or...
Process reviews.
Yeah.
Uh, any other?
Sounds like you're definitely...
Yeah, I know.
You got something?
Take us to 2014.
So, the code tweaks and modifications in business is going to address your business district's permitted principal and accessory uses, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if, and it sounds like most commission members just in a, their comments seem like we don't want to be, you know, very specific, we want to leave room for interpretation. But I think a lot of that can be corrected by just fixing what the development limitations are.
Something else in terms of zoning code that I don't remember being adequate, and I don't see is actually solid waste issues. Every time I'm seeing these plans and plots, most of the time, that doesn't seem to be, you know, adequate, I think is the term that's in there right now. Am I correct on that, or is there anything that covers?
Well, there's, if anything, it's more in the landscape ordinance as to, you know, screening and the area it needs to be, and I have put it on the checklist for Title 41, whether it's really in there or not. I've been kind of requiring it, so.
Okay. Just because I wonder if we, it doesn't, you know, it's always the last thing that gets put in there. I mean, we've, we've got a couple of things I think always fall to the back end of any type of project I see. One is, is the ADA accessibility, which is required in there and is usually put in, whether adequate or not, it depends on if the disabilities commission actually looks at it and says this works or doesn't work. You know, I have that conversation with people who say, you know, that the ramp up in front of City Hall is too steep for most wheelchairs at this point, although we, you know, anybody trotting up it wouldn't think about it. The other one is the trash and the garbage disposal. The classic, of course, is the one on Stuart Millak that seems to always pile over.
Yeah.
And again, we could say administratively, that's just, you know, we just ticket it when they, when their cup runs over, but maybe we should be doing it on the front end and thinking about it. And when you talk about density issues, again, we're always going to be married to that 180 square feet for bed, for a parking space for every bed. And unless you want to look at that and say, we want to change the mix of that, or waive that, or consider that as just a guideline, which will cause, open up different floodgates entirely, the density is always going to be constrained by that, what we can build and what people can park.
Well, parking was an item that had been listed, and we talked about, not only, I think Nicholas has said, looking at the one-to-one parking requirement.
Right.
At the same time, we have Ofer One, and they've created these lots that are greater than needed, and, you know, become possible commercial, or told they're for visiting families.
Right. We don't define a maximum currently, only a minimum requirement, and it'd be nice if we had a range. And what the mayor was saying, it may be interesting to see if per developments, there were trade-offs. I mean, we have this great bicycle and pedestrian plan that's been implemented, but, you know, could there be trade-offs of, you know, there's not a requirement for as much parking if covered, you know, bicycle parking is provided, or something along those nature, or, you know, they have to put in an effort to reduce the number. I mean, storing the number of bikes is less than storing the same amount of cars, so. I think, yeah, then in that case, we should have parking as another item.
Max, maybe.
Yeah, max, and then. Maybe I could fit into that density, lot coverage, location discussion.
Is the max, I mean, is that, is that part of, oh, only ours, right? R2, 3? Is that what you're talking about?
No, you put it in for businesses.
Oh, and B2? B2?
Yeah, there's a requirement for every kind of use in our parking chapter.
Are you talking about the bikes or the cars?
Well, I, yeah, Nancy, what was the...
I just wanted to know, I guess that, as somebody who's recently been responsive to neighborhood associations, I think theoretically what you say may be worthy of attention, but I think that it'll be a hard sell.
Yes.
Yeah.
Having, and I can understand where those people are coming from, because...
The rogue parking in the neighborhoods?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's where a lot of what our current legislation does come from, is because of people parking in neighborhoods.
Yeah, absolutely.
Storage parking is what we call it.
Storage parking, so-called. Yeah, and I don't know what you mean by max, but I'd like to, sometime in, generally, tell me where, after this is over, where you think an example of this is, and I'd like to, I'd like to just kind of take a look at.
Tony Farrion's pod on Millar had in excess of, what, eight, nine additional parking spaces.
The question's location.
He's gonna rent them out, right?
He probably can, yes.
What was presented to us, but, and I think that one that's being built now off of Mill is the same situation.
Okay. And all those other little houses are for sale now, so there'll be another one.
Boy, you're going back.
Again, I think they had, maybe they needed 12 and they should have showed 14, or something like that.
Well, that's for all three buildings. It's on either side of them, too, and they had the deed restrictions and so on and so forth. Looking back on that, it probably shouldn't have been a PUD a long time ago, but...
It troubles me, I just want to say that it becomes like it's an additional commercial venture occurring for what was primarily a residential.
I think, though, if you look at the list of the Title 41s you have in front of you, even though it's only been a year, I think the lot coverage rule and the Rs has really helped, and I don't think you're going to see that as much with the over parking, because they're limited in how much asphalt they can put in. In fact, we haven't had in a year's time now a single multifamily application in in our district since we implemented the lot coverage rule of 60%.
Yeah, but isn't R3 purposely set up for that, though?
Purposely set up for...
For multifamily...
Right, but what we were having before was people were going vertical and then covering the entire lot with all asphalt, and this has limited that now that they, they have to reduce the size of their building, calculate how many parking spaces they can get in based on a 60% lot coverage. So, it's not allowing them to have that extra parking, if that's usually, because then if they have an extra parking space, then they can add an extra bed, and I think they'd rather see that one-to-one ratio for purposes of income, so.
In residential, but not B's.
In residential, not B's, yes.
But that, you do make a good point, that that coverage might indeed...
It was adding the impervious surface to the coverage that did it, right? I mean, just to be...
Yeah.
Specific, which we had thought about doing about 20 years earlier. Yeah, gravel probably should be also.
Well, yeah, it is. It's, gravel doesn't, it's same as asphalt.
So, I just can't remember, I just remembered the general thing that happened.
Okay, any other suggestions?
Eventually, we should revisit and see what's going on with stormwater management, but that's not really our area yet, and it still needs to develop, but keep a weather eye towards it, I guess.
Okay.
EMS 4 plan, I don't know if that'll come through.
I don't, I don't know. I think it probably should go straight to council, but we have the stormwater prevention provision ordinance, and that's one of the reasons why we have the lot coverage.
Right.
We're moving towards it.
Yeah, one of the other items to maybe consider in the density, lot coverage discussion when we have that is whether developments that are using multiple lots have to join those lots, combine them.
Oh, good idea.
Because right now, they don't, when I think it's problematic, I mean, especially when we were having this discussion on the Far East Side about, you know, currently, a lot of those businesses go through multiple lots, but we should probably push for those to be combined.
I have been. Tony Farrion's project, for example, and all of those more recent, and I am pushing for them to go and combine the lots, and I have taught the county auditor's office, and we do have a process in place now that when they do a project like that, they are combining the parcels always one, so we are doing that.
That's, that's good. Any other, I'm gonna bring up discussion?
Keep us busy.
All right.
I think it's enough.
I'm sure we'll, I'm sure condense our list even further.
Okay, one last thing is, when we get to list in the minutes, next, next two weeks from now, is probably start thinking about which ones we don't want to do first, prioritizing. I mean, I've written a scribbled list, but I'm sure it's not the same exactly as yours, so.
Yeah.
Well, we've got a draft of what we want to see, next thing is say, what do we want to do first? Because we've got, that's quite a bit on our plate right there.
No, I, I think that's a great point to make, so at that next meeting, we will come to sort of order on what those goals will be.
Well, if we don't have any cases for the next meeting, that would be an opportunity to start.
Yes.
But the order isn't defined yet, and I don't...
Okay. We'll get there.
Well, I mean, does anyone have an issue with the Far East Side being that rezoning request? Taking a look, and I don't know if Nancy has all the documents.
I read it in the paper. Sarah does, I'll go try you.
Well, I think that one, and even though, you know, I've been reluctant, we need to look at the B-zones in terms of the...
Development.
Allow the uses.
First floor stuff.
Okay.
So, those would be...
I think those two would be sufficient.
Plenty of time.
All right, and, and Shar, if you could get a packet to prepare for Nancy on that rezoning request, or whoever has one available, in the meantime, I appreciate it. All right, any other communications? All right, reports from our city planner and director of development and code enforcement.
I've got a couple of things. We already touched on it, but the wireless communications, I do expect that should be going up for first reading at the next council meeting. We're just waiting for the law office to certify that everything is acceptable as written. About a year ago, maybe nine months ago, I mentioned to the planning commission that at the time, the former Athens County Planner, Bob Eichenberg, who was the acting, or who was the planner at that point, was going to do a presentation for the planning commission about planning ethics, and it's part of the requirements as American Institute of Certified Planning. Bob, Bob, since that time, when I mentioned that, Bob left his position, is no longer in it, but I, I would like to try to put something together on that for the commission at some point in the next few months, just a brief presentation on things that we should be thinking about when we're reviewing projects and all of that. A couple of other issues, Andy Stone this morning submitted an inquiry to ODOT in relation to looking at options for funding to help possibly create a bike path connector from the bike path to Columbus Road. Related to bike path issues, there is a bill moving through the US Congress right now. Today is the last day for public input on it. It is considering slashing by almost half the budget for the US transportation projects, including highways, but also eliminating what are called the transportation enhancement funds, and transportation enhancements have been used by the city aggressively to expand trails, bike paths, and sidewalks. The transportation enhancements also includes the safe routes to school funding, which the city has been able to leverage in the last four or five years for about $150,000 each year to, to really do some major improvements to our, our infrastructure. It is possible that based on a vote tomorrow at Congress, that that funding source may be entirely eliminated, so a lot of the progress that we've made in relation to bicycle and pedestrian projects may just disappear. We may, we just may not have that funding source anymore. There has been several people that are really concerned about that and have been trying to communicate that to our congressional representation, to let them know that we do see value in that. Other small issues, I did have a meeting yesterday with Matt Trainer, he's our GIS project coordinator at the Voynovich School. We had a good conversation about looking into some new projects. They were mostly infrastructure-related. Andy Stone and I were hoping to do some mapping that would try to simplify and create, have a good data source for all of the city's water meters, there's about 5,000 of them, and we'd like to get all those mapped and inventoried and photographed and to help facilitate the, the collection of that information and the collection of our water bills. I think that's all I've got for right now.
May I ask you, Paul, on the natural hazard mitigation plan, is that going to be presented here, or will that just go, the update directly to council?
That should go directly to council. All of the municipal, all of the political subdivisions in the county do have to adopt it. I believe public input on that, a public comment was closed in December. I think what we'll do is, I think their plan was that the National Natural Hazard Mitigation Committee at their next meeting, which should be in February, I think, this month, that will adopt or make a recommendation to the jurisdictions to adopt it and hopefully move forward from there.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. One thing that was discussed sometime about a month ago, the Towngown, International Towngown Association Conference coming up, and we were talking about trying to get somebody going to that.
We're still working on, on representation. We're still waiting on their agenda to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Town hall meeting on next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Evening at 6:30 PM.
All right, John?
We already spoke of the Meadow Lane project, so I'll move on to, two weeks from yesterday, I guess, will be a BZA case. Maybe this will help you sort your order of some of these. 476 Richland, Pentage Properties, CNE Hardware owns the building. Existing house, though, it used to be the chiropractic office, and it was a BMV before that, they're requesting to turn it back into residential, first floor residential in a B2 zone, so that will be going forward to BZA in two weeks. And beginning Monday, the 2012 rental inspection schedule will be implemented and started for this year. In conjunction with that, we will be enforcing the new sign ordinance very adamantly. Read through it closely this morning. Some of these yard signs you see out there, I'm just getting the word out, get them out of there, because they are illegal, so we will be pursuing that beginning Monday.
And the carbon monoxide?
Carbon monoxide has been in place since first of the year, and the landlords are doing a very nice job of coming into compliance. So, actually, I like to read the, I guess there was a fatality at the Holiday Inn in Parkersburg last night from the carbon monoxide situation.
Really?
Yeah, and I think that the chief and I have talked about what to do on some of the larger units that have boiler systems, as to whether or not we should require a carbon monoxide detector in the mechanical room and not throughout, and as well as throughout the entire building itself, and that's something that he and I are discussing, he's going to review a little bit, and we might have to do a little tweaking to the carbon monoxide ordinance as well, to maybe have in a large complex, have it in the centralized location that's tied into the enunciator system, in case something like that was to happen in the primary room. So, that's, we will be looking, I want to look in more into that, what happened there yesterday, but...
I think I said there was one fatality, but there were four or five others that were in the chamber.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I haven't heard what happened. I'm gonna look into it.
Any questions for planner? Thank you, John, Paul. Announcements and other business, first off, we have our next meeting scheduled for, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Filled it in with notes. Number six is opportunities for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Anyone like to present any?
My name is Ron Luce, 15 West Hills Drive, Athens, Ohio. I, as you know, I've come here several times before. I'm still very concerned about the interpretations of code that were allowed to go forth here several weeks ago. I, I want to, I want to state a few things, and then I want to ask a question, and we'll go from there. I believe, and I've said this before, that we, as a city, are on a very dangerous path, where our codes appear to become more and more meaningless as we interpret them in ways that are greatly distorted. I think the issues that can be seen that went on with the strip club, Graham Drive, and now 22 West Stimson, suggest that the public is seeing that there is a real problem and now 22 West Stimson, suggest that the public is seeing that there is a real problem with the way codes are being interpreted. I am very concerned about our government. Individuals appear to, different groups appear to be able to interpret code as they please. The code enforcement officer interprets code one way, the planning commission interprets code, even when you have advice from your law director that that's not a correct interpretation. We have the law director's office interpreting code, and then we have the Board of Zoning Appeals. For a citizen, it seems very strange to me that there is in some way that all the areas of government can come together and work hand in hand so that when a wrong is committed, somebody can say, wait a minute, this is not where we are as a city. There doesn't seem to be any way to reconcile differences short of going to court and spending a great deal of money and time, and I think that's wrong. I think it's extremely unfair for an average citizen to have to put forth a lawsuit, put forth the fear of losing a great deal of money, put forth the time and effort involved in mounting a case to fix what should be easily fixed right here. I think all of us should be able to be mature enough to say, I made a mistake, I'm sorry, I was wrong, I'm going to fix it. Instead, what seems to be happening is we're going to find a way to get around this and ignore it and hope it goes away. I hope that's not true. I spoke with an attorney, I've been speaking with an attorney a great deal, and my attorney says that you can reconsider your decisions for up to 30 days after the signed document that Mr. Bittner signed. When I was here a couple of weeks ago and Ms. Bain came on, she asked, as I recall, can we, can we overturn our own decisions? And I believe she asked, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, I believe she asked, can we get a legal interpretation on this? I am asking right now, and I'm going to ask you, Ms. Bain, because you seem to have a great deal of courage, and I appreciate what you've done, I would ask you to put forth a motion that a written interpretation from the law director be requested within the next week determining whether or not you have the right to overturn your own decisions when they are in fact wrong.
Any other question from the commission?
If I may, and I failed to provide copies to the planning commission members, who actually have been reviewed with the law director. A letter was sent out under John Paskey's signature, but I did indeed vet it, stating only the appellate can appeal to the, the result, the vote of the planning commission.
That was a whole separate issue.
What?
I sent a letter...
I will provide that with you, the tall...
I sent a letter to the Board of Zoning Appeals, asking them to hear this case. I believe they have the right to do that. I believe the code is clear. I don't think that Mr. Paskey is an attorney, and his funding is not appropriate. I asked specifically for the Board of Zoning Appeals to hear my case, and then they can determine whether or not they have the right to do that. But that was Board of Zoning Appeals, that wasn't for this board.
I guess I would like to state again that indeed, and I normally would not do this, Mr. Luce, so I apologize in this kind of methodology in this situation, he indeed is designated as a zoning administrator by myself and did indeed have the authority and was done under review with the law director's office, so...
According to my attorney, the Board of Zoning Appeals has the right to hear my case, they can decide if they wish to hear it or not hear it, that Mr. Paskey does not speak for the entire Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, that's what my attorney told me. But that is a completely separate issue. I asked here for you to overturn your decision, and I asked, I'm asking now whether or not the law director will put in writing that you can in fact, or cannot overturn your own decisions. There's nothing in the code that I can see that says you cannot, and according to my attorney, you can up until the 30 days are up, from the time of the signing of the document. So, I'm asking, Ms. Bain, will you put forth that proposal that a, that a formal statement from the law director be created and put in writing within the next week?
Specifically with respect to this case, I, I don't know, I feel a little queasy, Ron, going this way. I did ask the law director what could happen, and he never really got back to me, so I'm inclined to write him a letter as a person who was just sworn in at that point, and ask him exactly what the procedure is. You know, if the, if these permits have been issued already, you know, 30 days or not, what will be the, what will be the circumstance? So I will, as an individual, ask, I don't think I'm going to move to ask, because I don't think it'll win, and I'd rather not just go down that path. I will instead ask him about the two issues, because I believe that the zoning board does have the right at some point to review the decisions of the zoning inspector. It says it very clearly in the code, and I asked him explicitly when that would happen, and he said he'd get back to me, but I haven't seen it.
Right.
So, the overturning is a different issue, but the interpretation certainly is there in black and white, no question in my mind about it.
The interpretation?
Of the zoning, I mean, reviewing the zoning inspector, you can aggrieve party, and I don't think it says in the code that it's limited to an appellate.
The word appellate is not defined anywhere. Mr. Paskey chooses to interpret that to mean...
It's Pat I'm talking, I mean, it's the law director.
I understand, but I haven't talked with him about that particular term, though I brought it up. He said, the law director said that he would stand behind Mr. Paskey on his interpretation, however, Mr. Paskey's interpretation is not supported in the code, and the word appellate means anyone who appeals. So, we have what I see as a deliberate attempt to make it almost impossible for a citizen to stand up and say, the city has heard and needs to make this right. And it feels to me like I am being forced into a corner where the only legal option I have is to put my, what little money I have on the line and fight for years in court to accomplish something that is very simple. You made a mistake, was wrong, and all you have to do is say you're sorry, overturn it, and deal with the consequences.
Mr. Luce, the reason I say that is appellate, because if it's gone to the BZA, then that means it has been denied by the city. So in all likelihood, the person who's going to appeal my decision is the person who made the application.
You're making an assumption, sir.
Well, I, we don't send anything to BZA that's been approved, so, I mean...
The, the language clearly says that any, that anything that has been done incorrectly by the city, by any part of the city, should be appealed to the BZA. I would be happy to grab the paper and read it to you, but you all should know the code. There's nothing that says the appellate must be the person who put forth the proposal. I think there's a serious wrong here, and I think that I should not have to go to court and sue the city, and sue Mr. Wasserman, and sue everybody else to get something corrected that is very basic. It's as simple as that. A mistake was made, and the mistake should be overturned, and that should be the end of it. I think if the city continues to go down this path of supporting these kinds of decisions, you render our entire code system meaningless.
Nancy?
Well, I think you have to back off a little bit on that, or at least I request that you do. I think that interpretations are part of everything we do. The law director offers an interpretation, the court offers an interpretation, and I think that each case really needs to stand on its own, and so I don't want you to roll all of those other ones together. Talk about this one, I mean, you can do what you want to do, but in my opinion, it is a totally different set of circumstances.
And you may be right, and you're right, I should stay focused on this one, which is the one that I know most about.
Because otherwise, you know, the strip club, I mean...
Well, a lot of people didn't like it, but I think the code that you have supported it, but that's beside the point.
Well, and you know, I'm not...
I'm not an attorney, I don't want to get into all that, I do want to say simply that.
Yeah, and there's citizen boards too, and that's, but I think that maybe everybody ought to review the four powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals and see, I mean, I think it's in there, that we've not used it much, but I think it's a possibility, and it should be a possibility that could be exercised. I think it happens in other municipalities.
I absolutely agree, and I'm asking for that...
And it's not wrong, it's checking an interpretation, I mean, it's not righting a wrong, I know you feel passionately about it, but I would like you to consider this interpretation, checking an interpretation, okay?
Okay, well, I'd be more than happy to have this interpretation checked by, by someone and, and not force me into having to go to court to get this corrected.
I will ask the law director again about the timing. You spurred me, didn't you?
I did.
I mean, Paul did.
As an individual.
As an individual.
As an individual.
You can do it as a member of the commission as well, so move it.
Okay.
That's no problem. I do appreciate your comments. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you. Next, we will move on to announcements and other business, where our next meeting is scheduled for February the 15th at noon. RJ, you will be able to attend next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I may be in Pittsburgh also.
I will have a very small group. We'll set up your priorities.
You set up your priorities. I will try hard to be here.
Yeah, just let Charlene know.
Okay. Thanks, Charlene.
We'll actually generate a few subcommittees too, and you both are going to be on.
We'll be the ones doing it.
And Sharon.
Oh, that happens, doesn't it?
And the other announcement was that there's a town hall meeting scheduled for this Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
This, next Tuesday at 6:30 at the community center?
Yes.
Okay.
6:30 PM.
6:30 PM. You should try an early one and see what that is like.
What's that?
Try a 6:30 AM one and see.
Yeah.
Some of the same people.
It's open mic night, so anything goes.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
All right, any other announcements?
Nope.
All right, if there's no further discussion or items, this meeting's now adjourned.